Open session, public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. So let's start with the minutes. We have one set of minutes from December 19th in which Tom and Chris were the only two here. Do I hear a motion?
A motion to approve.
Second?
I haven't looked at them.
What? We've had these for months. Read them now.
All right.
Chris is very-
I read them a long time ago, so I don't remember anything wrong with them.
Okay.
I'll take the back. You can continue. When I finish reading them, we'll bring the motion back.
Okay, I have a letter of resignation from Jeanne Servell on the CBA. And we have a letter here to thank her on behalf of the town for her service.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I think she's done a great job.
Yeah.
Sorry not to have her there. And with that, I'll make a motion to issue the letter of thanks.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have a letter from the police chief recommending the hiring of Sharon McGowan as the full-time public safety administrative assistant. She's a Berlin resident, member of the fire department, and a former full-time dispatcher. Chief Z and the police chief reviewed resumes of several candidates from diverse backgrounds. They narrowed it down, interviewed four finalists, and Sharon was chosen as she had a variety of skills, both in office management, at an executive level administrative assistant, and public safety experience as a dispatcher.
I move to approve. It sounds like a good appointment.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
The continuation of the town membership in BJ's.
We're already there.
We're already there.
We're already there, we're just moving along.
Okay.
Mrs. Keith, would you like to explain this?
Well, I'm working on trying to get sort of reduced memberships at BJ's for town officials and employees, and I guess we could offer two committee members. The thing that I wanted to, wanted a decision made by the board is that we talked about possibly not having a town membership because we didn't use it in the past. However, that means that the single people who want to have a membership to BJ's would have to pay $35 rather than $25.
And how much is the town membership?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five. Have we talked to, have we talked to the Berlin food pantry about whether they need one or not one?
I have not sent out an email to loads of people. I was kind of waiting to see what we wanted to do about the town membership, so I could give them prices on the different memberships. Probably be a good idea.
You should probably talk to the fire department, because they have food. They have a kitchen.
Okay.
And food in there, and they might actually use the town membership.
Does the, do the police or some other group have a town membership at BJ's?
I don't know.
Okay, well, I can find that out.
So I would say, why don't you do a little more investigating?
Okay, I do know that at least one person that said they would like a membership is a single person, and she may change her mind if we don't have a $35 town membership. But I don't know if it would affect anyone else. We'll see how many people come forward.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, it's 35 bucks.
Right.
And I think if we encourage the fire department to use it and make sure we make that back, so I don't think we have to spend a whole lot of time on this.
No.
I would be willing to make a motion to continue the $35 membership.
I would second that.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I mean, we've got a lot of stuff to spend time on.
Right.
Acting as the personnel committee, we have the approval of the drug and alcohol policy.
Move to approve.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let me find my break-in. I'm going to make a motion to approve the minutes of the open session meeting on December 19th.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we had two requests. One was the library design for $50,000, and one was the swing set rubber padding over at BMS for $3,500. Let's start with the easy one. The swing set at Berlin Memorial. Put rubber padding underneath it so they don't dig holes into the ground. $3,500.
I would move to approve. I think it's a-
Worthwhile.
It's worthwhile.
I would second that.
And it's an identifiable item that will save some expenditure later on. I had some doubts about whether this should just be sort of general upkeep and so on, but, and I think it's close to the edge of that, but I'm willing to approve it.
Right.
Any other discussion?
No, I would imagine when they do have to replace it, it would be upkeep, though.
Yeah, no, we're not endowing it, we're just funding these.
Right.
Okay, all in, I heard a motion, I heard a second, and all in favor?
Aye.
I was gonna wait for Mary, but, okay.
The library has requested $50,000 to get a design and construction plan for an addition on the end of it.
I think, as we discussed when they came in, there is a significant issue there in terms of septic and public water supply that would certainly affect the project. So I think what we said to them was, we really didn't feel we could consider this, you know, certainly a final award, until we had, you know, really written resolution of that, we were able to review it to be sure it was something that the Commonwealth's actually committed to, and we could depend upon.
Plus, the grant that they were going to go for isn't going to be available until 2018?
So, as I said the last time, I think, all things being equal and that being done, I wouldn't mind a $25,000 award, keeping, keeping with our policy of trying to do things, you know, that had multiple, you know, fundings, as we talked about the 1870 Town Hall, which had, you know, over the course of its development, had a lot of, you know, donation of time and materials, et cetera, considerable vote of the town, and Commonwealth approval. And so our addition to that, you know, was to something that had demonstrated support by people who were really voting with their pocketbooks or their time. So I, you know, I would favor the 25 as something that would help to jumpstart it, would lessen the effect on the voters' pocketbooks, you know, if they voted for it, but would also require, you know, a commitment of other funding. But I don't think, I mean, unless we want to just have a vote to say, we're willing to consider that, to keep them moving, but I don't think we can, you know, we're ready to issue a final award until that other issue settles.
And because the grant is not available till, what did you say, 2018?
I'm pretty sure he said 2018.
Yeah.
Maybe they need more time.
Well, they certainly need more time, you know.
And they didn't send anything further, did they, Mary?
Not that I've seen yet. Well, I think that, didn't he say that $25,000 was the minimum amount that the town had to put up for, to apply for a grant?
I think so.
So, we could go with the 25.
Conditional upon them providing satisfactory evidence to the Board of Selectmen that they have solved the water and septic system problems. I would not be willing to vote for it without that.
Okay. All right. So, let's see, make a full motion.
Okay. I move to award the library $25,000 conditional upon their provision of evidence satisfactory to the Board of Selectmen that they have resolved issues regarding public water supply and septic on the site.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh.
Yo, you had a 7:15?
We have a 7:15?
You here with Energy North?
I am.
Come on up.
I have papers for everyone.
Good evening, folks.
Good evening.
Thomas? Okay, I need to open this first. Okay? In accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 148, Section 13, the Berlin Board of Selectmen is going to open a public hearing tonight at 7:15 in Room 206 to consider the application of Energy North Group Amendment to remove existing underground fuel storage tanks, pipes, and fixtures and replace with storage capacity as follows: One split gasoline storage tank holding 15,000 gallons and 6,000 gallons respectively of gasoline for 21,000 gallons total; and two, a second tank capable of storing 10,000 gallons of diesel fuel at 265 Central Street, Berlin, Mass.
Okay, so a brief history of why we are here. The tanks at that location currently are what they refer to as single-wall steel, meaning it's just a steel tank in the ground. Per EPA regulations that were put into effect some 15 or so years ago, all single-wall steel tanks containing gasoline, diesel, fuel oil need to be removed by August 7th, I believe, of 2017, have to be removed and taken out of service. So that means essentially that those tanks have to be replaced. So what, the reason why we're here is currently that that facility is set up with a 4, a 6, and an 8,000 gallon storage tanks for your different, for your different grades and products. What we are requesting is a, an increase in storage to a total of 31,000. The facility sits right off the highway, 18,000, makes it very difficult to order properly. There's a window between the time when you can get in a tanker load of fuel and the time when it's empty. And in a facility such as that, where the tanks are really that small, that window is pretty, it can be, it can be three to four hours by the time between when you can get a load in and when. So what we're requesting is a little bit larger capacity so that, so that it makes the site easier to manage from a supply and demand standpoint. The tanks, then, the whole system that will, we propose to go in, whether approved or not approved, will be a double-wall system, meaning that at no point from the time where the tanker hooks up in the system to the point where the gasoline comes out of the tube and goes into a car, is there anywhere in that system where the same wall or barrier has the environment on one side and fuel on the other. There is always the entire system can, is doubled. And on top of that, the system has sensors at multiple points throughout the system that if either the outside fails and water or whatever is allowed into the, they call it interstitial space, or fuel oil escapes from the inside into that space. It is, first of all, contained completely from one or the other, whether the environment or the, or the fuel tanks, and then sensors or alarms go off alerting to the presence of it. So there are some drawings, essentially from, from the top side, from the ground up, the station itself, we propose to change very, very little. The only real, the only real noticeable changes that there would be would be, we're requesting to add a diesel, dispensing two points of diesel up under the canopy, which would simply be on a gas pump, so the gas nozzle's on one side, diesel nozzle's on the other side, and that. And the other, the other thing is we request to, to be able to move the rear diesel island over about 10 feet to make it easier to get for, for the larger trucks to get in and out of there. Ironically enough, two weeks ago, we had a tractor-trailer take out nearly that entire island.
That was nice of him.
It was awfully nice of him, yes, he did. He actually, if I can show you, he actually pulled up into the lawn out here, got stuck, and backed right through, took down, took down the fire suppression system, sent the pump five feet off of the island onto the ground on the side of it. So actually, there already is a brand-new pump out there, which we just put in last week, and rebuilt the system. And then that would facilitate a new, a new fire suppression system being put out there. And that was the, that was one of the questions that the fire chief had, was if that would, and that would all be brand, that would all be brand-new out there. But that, from, from a visible standpoint, the station would not, would not change at all. You'd still have four pumps up front, still have the canopy in the front, still have the diesel in the back, and everything else would be underground.
Any changes to signage or anything like that would require a site plan amendment?
Nope.
Nope.
Nope, we already have diesel at the site, so there would be no need to change any of the signage.
I talked to the fire chief, and he said everything, you had given him everything he'd asked for, and that you had plans that were, I guess, given to him or coming to him. He was happy.
Yeah, for the fire suppression, we have to actually, for the modification, we have to send it to the state for the state fire marshal approval preliminarily, and then once that's approved, the plans have to go to him to get approved and then, or modified, and then, then we get the okay, so.
And the chief has endorsed this application.
I presume so.
You know, he has.
Yeah.
That was-
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I tried to, one minute, but it didn't.
Yeah. Going back, you said you had 4,000, 6,000, and 8,000 at this point?
Currently, correct, yes, sir.
Does that correspond here, so that this is 4, 6, 8? Is that what it is?
That, I believe, this is the, the new application.
I know, this is the new, I meant, I was just trying to-
Oh, I think, I believe the 6,000 is actually the diesel currently, I believe, and the 4 and the 8 are your gasoline, your unleaded, and your super grades.
Okay.
I believe is the way it's split up.
How come you have three grades and two tanks of gasoline? How does that work?
Okay, because it's a, internally, it's a split tank, it has two compartments.
Oh.
So it has one, one external compartment, and then two compartments internally.
Okay.
Makes it a little bit cheaper, you only have to buy one, you know.
No, no, that's fine, I was just, you know, I was just curious.
Are you gonna have to close when you do this?
Yes. Yeah, we anticipate we'll be down for somewhere between six and eight weeks. Of course, all work will be, the fire, the fire department will be notified prior to our beginning. We already have a contractor lined up, fully insured. Any part of the agreement is any contamination that is found at the site, if there is any currently, will be, will be managed appropriately with the, with the proper, with the property companies. We have those, we have those lined up already, if necessary. And all work will be done during regular business hours.
Okay.
So, one of the issues here is that the notification to the abutters did not go out until this past Friday.
Oh.
So, and I'll pass this by your legal mind, we were gonna continue the hearing for two weeks. He's gonna send cards out again notifying the abutters of the meeting in two weeks. Would that work?
I think we may just have to schedule a new hearing.
Okay.
I mean, we can check the town council, but they're very, my understanding of it is that the Commonwealth is very, you know, sort of strict about the abutters having notice- Sure. -of the hearing when it opens.
Okay.
We shouldn't, if, if they didn't have notice, I mean, this, this, what we're doing now is ineffective, so I don't think we can continue it.
Okay.
But that's, that's my concern.
Okay.
To be quite truthful, it was, it was my company's mistake.
Oh.
So inadvertent, but it was, it was a mistake, so.
I think that we should note for the record that this hearing is not-
Boyd?
Not, is, is not official because of the failure of the notice of abutters, and that we will reschedule.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
No, that's-
Maybe I should have brought that up first.
Yeah. Well, we certainly will know what's going on the next time, but we'll hear it again because there are any abutters.
You guys can just sit there and snooze away, we've heard this before.
Yeah.
So, then you're gonna have to put an ad in the paper, it's really gonna be three weeks from today.
Okay.
I presume.
I mean, you guys-
Given this week to put the ad in the paper and, and the two weeks, so, is that March 6th?
Yeah, that would be the next one, right. Yep. So we have a meeting with the FinCom that night, and so it could be maybe before that, 7:15, if you think it'd be fast, or it could be, well, we don't have to continue this to a date certain, but-
No.
No.
7:15 or 8 o'clock?
Why don't you do 7:15?
Okay.
Since we've already heard it once.
Yeah, I mean, unless there are abutters.
Right.
What time is the FinCom meeting?
7:30?
7:30. Well, I don't think that's gonna be a problem.
Okay.
All right, then.
I can tighten up the presentation if you need.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. I will regenerate that and send it to you tonight.
I will have that out this week.
Take your free time. All right, thank you.
Budget request. Now I think you should shut that window.
All right.
Yes, cooling off.
Yeah. I can feel the cold there.
You could do this later if you want, but this is the draft.
The draft.
Well, we'll do that after.
Yeah.
We'll do that when they're not here.
You do the building inspector, though, in there, which I think is pretty straightforward.
Okay. Well, we have-
Unless you wanna wait.
Yeah, I mean, we've only got two minutes, so.
Yeah. Well, all they've done is a request for transfer for property liability and-
No.
Fire department.
Right, I don't know that they got that, because I sent the, the transfer early late this afternoon. I was trying to print it for them, but this one prints it for some reason. I thought I could just show it to them. Yes, yes. Oh, my goodness, can I take that?
Yep. Well, I mean, they can just-
I saw the emails, so I'm not surprised. It was late. Yeah.
You can come forward.
It's all your fault, Harry.
We have a scheduled meeting Wednesday.
We'll take it out of your hide someday.
Well, we need to, do we need to sign this?
We need to vote on that.
Well, you vote.
Yeah, you guys vote, then we sign.
We need to vote tonight, and then we'll-
There you go.
Well, in the past, we've also recognized that both of us need to pass it, sometimes FinCom can do it first, but it's better if it follows the normal process.
Okey-dokey. So, you wanted to talk to us about something?
Yes, and we had a request for executive session.
And under what were you going to call, here are the various purposes for executive session. Which one of these do you think it-
I thought it was a personnel-
It is a personnel issue.
Maybe we could, okay, so we can do it publicly if you would like.
Well, no, no, hang on. I mean, all right.
It's not litigation.
Is this about a particular person's pay, pay policy?
No, it's a pay policy, so it will have impact on specific people, but obviously our purview is budget-related stuff.
Do these, will this have an impact on a contract worker?
Yes.
Okay, then that's a lawful reason to go into executive session.
Okay.
It's so handy to have-
Personnel matters, personnel matters, actually. You have to give notice to the person who's the subject of it.
Right, because this is not like-
They get to attend, so we couldn't do that.
Right, because this has nothing to do with anyone doing anything wrong.
Right, exactly, okay.
All right.
Then I, that's a good, that's a reason?
All right, let's make a motion.
Move to go into executive session for the purposes of discussing compensation of contract employees.
Second?
Boominai.
Keithai.
And Ryan.
For property and liability insurance for $561.97, because it's an added premium for the new highway truck.
Yep.
Increased cost and added coverage, special property endorsement.
We don't actually have quorum.
But we will-
We do.
If you act on it, we'll sign it on Wednesday.
Right.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
And the clerk?
If I could ask one more thing before FinCom is done?
Yeah.
Without an FAC, when it comes to warrant articles and their groupings and wordings, where does that go and who's doing that? Because FinCom would like to group several of them together to limit the number of warrant articles, or at least put appropriate ones together, like the school has four small repair ones that total 42,000. I'd like to see that as one and not multiple votes, and we might take some of the fire and police ones and group them together as well.
I think what we've done previously is group them, but allow you the ability to, if you, if you don't agree on a particular thing, allow the ability to call that one item out.
I'm totally fine by that.
Yeah, the fire chief was okay with the grouping. This was the school, the schools who were intended.
Because once, once they get written as separate articles and start going as notices as separate articles, at that point, it is difficult to combine them together. And so if earlier on, we can make sure, I don't know if you want me to write up the one-
So your, your idea would be, if there are four items, it would be to fund $4,200, whatever it is, for these four items?
Actually, I think for the schools, it's going to be $42,000 for repairs to the schools, which include these things.
Yeah.
You know?
I think we'd have to ask the superintendent.
The superintendent, when I was, we were talking about that.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would, I think if you've got, if you've got four minor repairs, it costs $4,200.
Or $30,000, but yes.
Or $42,000, okay?
But it's still below the standard of materiality for any kind of an audit.
And, well, and they're, they're relative, because I just, every year when we do the three small library repair ones that total $10,000, to do those is-
Yeah, and those they should be in one.
Just, and, and so-
Or you could just tell them to put a repair item in their budget.
Yep.
For something, for some things we have, but for others, they're, you know.
It's how you make sure it gets done, sort of stuff.
Oh, well, that's true, that was a-
It was the argument for it, so.
I mean, if there were a larger item in the mix, then we might feel differently, but they're pretty small this year, so it seems-
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
Well, and we used to put the school stuff in the front if they had to go over to Boylston for something.
Which has the same night later on, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So that was-
All right, I'll get over you, we'll talk Wednesday about any sort of groupings we might want and get them over to you, so you're at least aware of what we're thinking. We'll let the appropriate department heads know, and so if anyone has a name, Jack, including Barry, and if people have objections, we'll get that taken care of.
Okay.
Yeah, and we'll make sure to act on the reserve fund transfer on Wednesday.
Yep.
Yes, because we're closing the warrant next week, next Monday.
It's the 27th we're closing the warrant.
Isn't it the 27th?
Next week, we're at the 13th now, and so if we jump to the 27th, next week.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Two weeks, take it back.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks very much.
It's all yours.
One second, I'll get it back to you.
Okay, you can come forward.
That's fine.
No, it's a matter of, no.
Wasn't counting chairs. Is that okay?
One for you.
Thank you.
One for you.
Thank you.
Well, she made some for you, I don't know, do you need them?
Yeah, there's a couple extra. Oh, that's so nice, I'll take one, thanks, thanks. Yeah, yeah.
Good evening. Good evening.
I just don't have it. This is what I have. Take it back. That's okay. That's all right.
Okay.
I bring a group.
Yeah, really? Nice, huh?
Good to see you have a group.
Good to see you having a group.
Yeah.
Do you guys know everybody that we have here?
I've never met. I'm Tammy Mone.
Hi.
I'm Chris Keith.
Nice to meet you.
Judy Boomin.
Nice to meet you, Judy.
I'm Andrew.
Nice to meet Tom.
Nice to meet Mary.
Hi, Valerie. We've met. We'll shake hands anyway.
Hi, Valerie.
Hi, nice to see you again. Hi, Judy. Nice to see ya. Hi.
Hi, I'm Julie Lee. I met you not that long ago.
You did.
Okay, so we asked you to come in because your budget was rather sparsely explained-
Okay.
In that you... I don't think I have copies spread around here. So you went up from $3,400 to $5,000, and then we had no idea what goes in or what goes out of your revolving account, and so you gave us this.
Okay, hopefully that was giving you a bit more meat to see.
And we have some trial balances and ledgers here. Well, I don't want to speak for the whole board. I'll speak for myself, and they can join in. I guess the problem that I have with all of this is that this revolving account is like, God, if I say the word, a slush fund type thing, where we never know where you're getting money from, we being the town, and what you're spending it on. You should, I think by law, what you're supposed to be doing is publishing this in your annual report.
In the annual report, I don't know if you went back and read any of them. We do talk about the revenue and the expenses and the primary revenue and saying, you know, where it... That it's... Revenue has basically been coming in from outside soccer clubs. And expenses, the expenses that have been going out of the revolving account have mostly been for field maintenance. I think the year that we contributed to the basket... Outside basketball court, I think we've mentioned that in the town report as well. So that's always at the end of our report is, because that is a legal obligation. So starting balance, how much revenue came in, where it kinda came from, and the expenses and any major expenses we do list, and then a finishing balance, so...
Do you have any plans? I mean, I can see that your major expenses here appear to be field maintenance, trash, and porta potty.
That's the big money that we're spending currently.
And the playground is... That's under your-
Playground, yes, that's under us, and that is... Has to be covered as well, so... We spent money on bark mulch two years ago, so that's an ongoing thing, as well as one of the things we need to get back into doing, annual maintenance checks on that as well.
Do you have any... It looks kind of loosey-goosey. In other words, I don't see any plan on for FY '18. That's right. It's not '17. That you're gonna spend this amount of money on this, this amount of money on this, this amount of money on this, and we're requesting $1,600 more because we're gonna be short, or... I guess that was the question, is that you have money, so why are you asking for an increase?
Go ahead, Lee. Want to take off a part of this?
All right, I'll start. I'd say because what we anticipate doing at South Commons is building it up to use it as a recreational facility, so potential ideas. It's doing a walkway around paved, so people can run, people can walk, you can bike. It's right at the fields. We'd like to do a pavilion there, so we can do arts and entertainment outdoor. I know 19 Carter does a lot of that also. We want to bring the venue outside for youth and for families and for elderly, basically everybody in the community. Just really building up South Commons to use it as recreational. And even though it seems like we have a lot in there, to do any of big project is gonna cost tens of thousands.
One of the things that's starting to really show over the years now is the condition of the fields. We've actually had... We have had... We have a lot of kids enrolled, especially in our soccer program right now, so we have a lot. It's really spread out, and we've kind of concentrated it in certain areas over the years, and it's really starting to show. There's areas that we're having a lot of trouble just growing grass, or, you know, starting to get a lot of divots and things like that. And with the drought that we've had, you know, over the last couple of whiles, we're having a hard time with, you know, we need irrigation down there. We need, you know, more water and stuff like that. So to do any kind of field improvement work, I mean, you can see we're paying Diamond Athletics quite a bit of money just to do the, you know, bare minimum of maintenance down there. That's a huge undertaking to do more improvements on the fieldwork. We used to attract a lot of groups down there who would like to rent out, and somehow, like, over the years, it sounds like that's starting to dwindle. We're not getting as much people.
We lost a good chunk of revenue last fall because of after... After last summer and the dry conditions we had and the grass not doing well, we did... We lost the income that we normally get in the fall, about $3,200 last fall, so we're not-
Didn't you have someone in that back field who was gonna do the maintenance, too?
They're doing maintenance on that back field section, but in addition to that, they've also been utilizing some of the field space up front and paying us incremental fees to use that front area. So they didn't use the front area last fall as well as their area in the back, even though they have been paying the maintenance on that. They didn't even use that the way they normally use it, because it just got really devastated last summer. So...
So where did the $1,600 come from?
Spring.
Sorry?
The $1,600-
I mean, the $1,600-
Because I mean, from all your... From what you guys are saying, you need like a special article for field restoration that is way more than that, so she was saying, what's the $1,600?
I mean, it's like some number you thought $5,000 sounded nice.
Nice round number.
It was a round number, yeah. We thought about 10, 15.
No, you don't tell us this.
So they asked me how we have $3,400, and I said, well, that's where it was about eight years ago when I attended a town officers' meeting, and I remember the selectmen saying, "Budget's tight. Would every department please freeze their budgets?" At that time, recreation did. Since then, as far as identifying a main project that we would be spending capital expenditures on and having to treat it as a project, you know, get plans in place and either spend our own money or go to town meeting and ask for a meeting. We really, I mean, for... Ask for funding. We really haven't followed through on a project like that, so the revenue that we have been raising is what we've been putting towards our annual operating costs, is what I'd call it. I mean, there are things in here, the porta potties and the trash removal, that we know that we need to do every year, so yes, those are identifiable numbers, which our $3,400 isn't even covering that portion of our costs. So we are drawing from the revolving account. So one of the things that we said is we'd like to hold the revolving account for doing those kind of projects, like what Julie was saying, would like to get into and identify a project, such as a walking trail, such as a picnic pavilion or something like that, and have those revolving accounts that we can build and use towards that as compared to having to pay ongoing maintenance costs that you have every year.
Well, it does look as though the balance last year was $29,000 in the revolving, and now it's $32,000, so that's going up. It doesn't seem right to stockpile the revolving account and then ask for additional money for the budget, to me. Taxpayers, I don't think they think very fondly of that.
I mean, this is all kind of like vaguely... I mean, if you want to put purchases of services in here, then you need a second piece of paper that says that the porta potties are gonna cost, say, $1,200, and that, I don't know, the landscaping is blah, blah, so that you match your expense with your income on this.
Through the years, I mean, we've drawn those traditional maintenance expenses out of revolving and out of the annual budget. I mean, if we were to tally up everything we know that we need for the fiscal year, for porta potty, for trash removal, and we come in somewhere $4,500, I mean, is that something that's more palatable if we quantify it exactly like that? Yes.
Yes.
Yes, if what you were saying is you want to take some of those ongoing operating items and roll them into the budget that you're currently paying out of the revolving fund, because you want to build up the revolving fund to address some of these other issues, partially, you know, or address that, then I think that's fine. I'd also note that I just, you know, did the math, and if, in fact, we had increased, you know, your budget by 2.5% since, and I presume it was in 2008 or so- Somewhere around there. Had that meeting, if I remember correctly. It'd be about $4,400, $4,500 at this point, you know? But I don't think there's a problem with saying there are one or two items that we're paying continually out of the revolving fund, and we would like to- We haven't had an increase in our operating budget in eight or nine years, and we'd like to move this into the budget because we want to build up the revolving fund to help support some of these larger projects. I don't... Personally, I don't have a problem with that. Took the words right out of my mouth.
But you need to-
I under... I totally agree.
You need to be very specific.
Yes, you need to be specific.
It's a small amount of money, but it's a small amount of money, but it's the percentage stuff that, you know, that FinCom looks at that as well, like, you know, why is this, you know, why is this budget going up at such a large percentage? Even a... I mean, it is just $1,600 bucks, but it's the percentage and the optics and-
There could be a problem with that anyway. I mean, people could say, but look at the revolving account. Unless you have a plan for the revolving account and get that plan out there to people, they're gonna wonder why the revolving account is increasing and your budget's increasing.
I would advise that you get a plan together and say, "We need $50,000 to do paving," or, you know...
Sounds like the first thing would be the field.
But you can't just say, "We're keeping it. We're gonna build it up." You need to show that you have a purpose to it.
Okay.
That is the exact discussions we've had since we've had these new members come on board and starting to make some momentum on doing things like that.
Especially if you have a plan and you want to do paving and you want to do... You're gonna have to phase it in, so you should, you know?
And you will probably want some special article money in addition to revolving funds. So getting it out there and getting it socialized, so people aren't hearing it for the first time at annual town meeting, because, you know, when people are hearing it for the first time, anything can happen, you know? Anybody can get up and say something that's, you know, misinformed or whatever, and because people haven't, you know, been socialized to it and the information isn't out there, the whole thing goes south, you know? So you really do need to do that. You talk about the plan, so Julie actually brought a copy of the original South Common plan that was created back when we did the-
I remember that.
The playground, and we're kind of dusting that off and looking at some of the components that are in there.
They would've gotten that trail except for certain property on toward one end. There, remember that?
Mm-hmm.
I was on FinCom.
Yep.
Yeah, that would be good.
So pretty.
Or there may be steps. Maybe there's steps that you need to take. What do you want to do first? Is it the fields? Is it... Yeah. Plans are really tough.
Us being here collectively tonight is also a way to show you guys that we have a real recreation committee these days, that people that are looking at-
And that's delightful.
Picking up a project and following it through as compared to for the last multiple years, we've just been doing enough to get by in maintenance, holding on for survival, and now we're ready to move forward like we should be doing. So that's why we're all four of us are here, to talk about $1,600. Yeah, and we appreciate that. And again, it is part of it, it's like, I feel badly bringing you out on such a night for $1,600, but it is a good opportunity to talk. Correct. And, you know, again, I think it's optics, getting things out there, getting these issues in front of people so that they recognize them when they come up again, and then, you know, talking about sort of, you know, multi-source funding, you know, special articles, contributions, revolving fund, et cetera, you know? Because I think that's the way you have to attack, you know, any issue like that.
So you're going to get us a sheet to attach to this budget, so we can sign off on it and send it over to FinCom?
We will do that quickly.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
It's nice meeting you guys.
Nice meeting you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Judy, thank you for your other email that you sent me on the energy company, the one that the Energy-
Verde? Yeah.
I had been buying from them prior years, and then just recently switched over.
Thank you.
Oh, we're part of the Berlin Energy, and I'm like, what? What are you throwing at me here? So I'm still mulling, even going back to them. But one of the things that I didn't like about them was they'll run out your plan year, and even though they have all the capability of giving you a notification, email, phone call, letter, they don't notify you of anything, so when you see that your one-year and two-year commitment is up, by the time you see it-
It's like the charter. Well, so on this plan, if you're on municipal aggregation, we are in control of that. Your price will never be above national grid.
Right, because noise should end with this price, but I do have that email. I'd be following up a little further on that one, so... Thanks for that.
Two or three items for paying that revolving.
Okay.
Got it.
See you later.
Invite us again.
All right, thanks. You can invite us sometime when you're doing a... When you're looking at one of your projects. We'll come.
Thank you.
All right.
Okey doke. We have our own budgets.
Sorry, so this is just a draft for first review. This one for each.
The increase in part-time wages, that's a...
No, it's just me. That's not the administrative assistant.
I was getting there.
Yeah.
Remind me about the number of hours of increase that represents?
So instead of 30, you had asked in your notes if you wanted me to go to a 35.
Here, you have it on the sheet.
Okay, sorry.
And 20 contingent hours, though.
Mm-hmm.
If you feel that's what you'd like to do.
In other words, if needed?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I didn't know what number you'd want for... I didn't have time, Judy, to research the salary survey that the MMA has-
Oh.
On what the administrative assistant gets, but then it's really more of an HR type.
Well, I did bring in... If I can find where I put it.
I put something in a narrative about it, but I couldn't put a dollar on it.
I brought in the shared human resource manager feasibility study, which was the one about possibly sharing with-
Tohoto and Berlin.
Tohoto and Berlin. And at the bottom end of that, she has a salary range for a director of human resources in Newton, $110 to $120, a benefits coordinator for $51 to $60. Those were the only two she had in there. Oh, and there's one in the town of Spencer that was advertised at $75.
Full-time?
Yeah.
You may have the schools, too.
No, it was a full-time... Well, it did say that the position had been cut due to budget constraints.
Okay.
But I'm thinking if it's part-time, you could look at maybe $35 to $40. I don't know. All right, so we have an increase in your salary, which is both a step and cost of living plus an increase in hours.
Mm-hmm.
And then other services is going down $1,500 because of the copiers. Would that be right?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. And other expenses is going up $1,500 for MMA dues and MCTPO tuition?
Right.
Oh, this is for your purchasing?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, those tuitions are not... They're high.
And they won't do... They won't do any web-based training, which is ridiculous.
Well, you can go to a remote location. Sometimes they're offered in Boston and remote locations, but still pay the full boat.
I know. Well, you should be able to do it right here in your PC, but I digress.
Great.
I think we should get a municipal discount for municipal training programs.
That's right.
Like we do for BJ's.
Exactly.
Exactly. Oh, man, okay.
So, the majority of the increase in this budget is salary.
And I think we've, I think we've talked about this and I think that the additional hours are justified. I think that the 20 hours contingent is reasonable, but, you know, obviously that'd be subject to prior approval by us. But, you know, if we get into a situation like we got last year where we were running around putting together stuff for ATM and, you know, those, those kind of things happen and I think to have that contingency in there, FinCon may say that they'd like us to do that as a reserve fund transfer, but so be it. But I think it's a decent thing to put in the budget, even the 20 hours contingent.
Yeah, I agree.
Yep.
Now, do we want to put something in for a human resources or administrative assistant?
No, I don't.
Is there any other way to fund that other than putting it in our budget?
I don't know, how would you fund it?
I don't know. There isn't anything else, any other budget to put it in, so.
Different towns do it different ways. Sometimes it's under, treasurer has an assistant treasurer who does HR, or town administrator has an assistant who does HR, no town administrator.
I, a colleague of mine on this board has said a number of times that they don't think that there's going to be a great appetite for additional spending this year and I don't think we really, I don't think we really have a solid idea of what it is we want, how we can provide it, whether it's a shared resource or whatever. And so, I, I think the combination of not having a solid proposal and the likely attitude on the town meeting floor, I just think it's a waste of time. A great cause and something we have to, yeah.
Get it going the following year perhaps.
You know.
My report.
It's, I mean, it's, it's definitely something that needs.
Yes.
To be addressed, but I think with those two things in mind, I don't think that, I think it'd be a waste of time for us to put that out there.
Okay, then do I hear a motion to approve this budget?
So, moved.
Second.
Can I just note one thing, which is self-serving, so I wanna make sure that you understood it, because Judy said put it in, but you could discuss it, a $10 a month contribution towards my cell phone.
I saw that, not a problem.
$10 for what?
Her cellphone.
I use my cellphone increasingly to text people to get a quicker response to emails, which I volunteer.
That's fine, $10 a month, seen fine.
Fine, good, yeah.
Uh, do I hear a second?
Yes, you did.
On favor?
Are you passing this on to me? No. You are not passing it on to me. You will need it next year.
So, we need to do your sick pay too.
Right, that's a straight calculation.
Yep. Okay?
Yep. And that leaves us with building inspector, which he put in, I, I think that salary's way too high to be hiring. He's gonna be gone at the end of the year, the end of this fiscal year. I think that could get chopped by 20,000.
I know you telegraphed that you wanted it level funded just so that whomever you do hire, you'd have a budget to negotiate with. But maybe you'd be making that decision before the end of the fiscal year?
I can go back, I have a list of what building inspectors were getting in the area and this was by far the highest.
Maybe surrounding towns too?
Yeah. Well, we have a lot more, we have a lot more building going on than say Bolton or.
But that's, that wave is cresting and will pass us eventually. So, I think, I agree, I mean, I don't mind voting this level funded because if we negotiate and have somebody hired, we can, we can put a lower number out on the floor.
But as we discussed previously.
What do you mean?
I don't wanna tax people on something that's not gonna get spent and it'll be taxed.
No. If we reduce the budget line on the town meeting floor, they won't be taxed on it.
Okay, why do it on the town floor? Why not do it here? Oh, because you think by town meeting, we're found somebody?
We, we may have.
Okay.
Or at least have a salary in mind at that point?
Yeah.
Well, I would at least like to level fund it and, and take the increase in the part-time wages and part-time and incentive and reduce this by 38, 67.
Let's see. Do I have that?
Nope, that's the only copy.
Okay.
Yep, there's an incentive. Where's that incentive? Part-time wages, part-time salary?
Firefighters have the incentive.
Well, what are the two line items there? That's incentive.
I think, I think, if I'm not mistaken, that these things are down.
One.
One from where they should be.
Yeah.
So, part-time wage is.
That's LeAnn.
And then who's part-time salary?
Him.
Him.
There's always been a debate whether it be salary or wages.
Oh, okay, okay.
These should just be up one line.
Right, okay.
Okay.
It should be full-time salary, but I digress.
It's just ranging endlessly as to which one it is.
Okay.
How many hours does he work a week?
40, isn't it?
I think it's 36, but I'm not certain.
Yeah, which is full-time, but anyway. Regardless, the point is, this is, this is Larry, this is LeAnn.
Okay.
Okay? So, I think we should vote it level?
You should probably arrow it up, or Julie will do so and send it back, so just do loop, loop, arrow up and down.
Well, I'm gonna put it to full-time, you know? All right?
Yeah.
Well, we'll, we will revisit this, I assume, then at some point before town meeting.
So, we're cutting, we're gonna make this level funded.
Be advertising and talking about salary and then we're just gonna be making a motion at town meeting. If we, one, I'm sure we'll be farther enough along that we may be putting, even if we haven't chosen somebody, we may be putting a lower number out there. And we may have chosen somebody and we may be putting a lower, but that's all we have to do is put the lower number out there.
Okay.
On the ATM floor.
My motion is to take the $3,867 and take it out of the 97.9 and make this a level-funded budget.
All right, you take it out of the, no.
Take it out of the salary.
Right, salary, not the part-time.
That gives LeAnn her cost of living increase.
Yeah, that's fine, I mean, that's a minor, yep.
But it's still.
Okay. You can mark it up.
I don't wanna see any more council on aging type emails going back.
Oh, my God.
Budgets.
All right, 94. This is 94.
Yeah, and I just wanna make it clear. Larry, none of, none of the call or anything is applicable to Larry because he's gonna be gone by the time we start the next fiscal year, so.
Right.
You know, I think that's fine.
I think he increased it 2.5, though if his budget were to carry forward another year, it would be subject to a contract renegotiation anyhow because of lapses. His last annual was 2.5.
I wanna take her increase out of really this.
This'd be somebody else anyways.
So, that would mean, okay.
Okay.
We're gonna have to do old math here.
Blah, 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 like it was, he did 2.5.
Yeah, that's not gonna work.
No. No, that does.
Does it?
Yeah, because this is negative.
But these don't add up then, do they?
No, you have to re-add all of that, but.
Right.
But that's okay. So, that zeros, this zeros out.
Okay, so absolutely level fund.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, do I hear a motion?
So, moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
I'll finish this, we're done. Uh, what else? Review the draft annual report. Do we have a draft annual report to review?
You do, it's under everyone's stack of papers.
Right here.
Stamped draft. And you fully just got this, so.
Okay, so we'll read it and put it on for next week.
Okay.
Is there anything else to come before the board?
We don't have anything to do on the contract, I think we have to.
Oh, actually, I have a list.
No, let's do.
I wanted to let you know.
Okay, all right, nothing?
You wanna, actually, you wanna just take a quick break and then talk about it and then, uh.
Talk about what?
If I can talk to you about it real quick.
Sure.
Okay, we're gonna be taking a quick break.
Are you gonna film?
We're back from the break.
We're back.
Lives, Monday night, from Berlin, Massachusetts.
Yep.
I just wanted to let you know that Keith and I received an email from Liz Valerio with some dates.
Counsel.
For, yeah, for negotiations with the Teamsters.
Okay.
And that was about it.
Good luck with that, I've done it with the police and.
I've done it a few times myself.
Good.
Okay, is there anything else?
No.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.